Started, if there's anyone that has not signed up that wants to speak tonight, if you'd like to go ahead and step out and do that, that'd be great. Want to take care of first before we do that, part of our information that was available for handout, and I believe it can be made available online if it's not, since the last time that we met in public hearing in regards to the tax, proposed tax increases, we did commit and ask that the state auditor's office come down, and they have provided us with a letter. There were no findings, there were suggestions, and so that three pages is there. There are some great opportunities as far as accounting and how we go about doing our budgeting, and those items, the recommendations will be the things that we'll continue to work on. So if you want that information, again, that happened, they came down and visited us for three days and took a good look at the items that they reference in that document. The second thing is, is we are saddened this last week, a week ago Sunday, Frank Ori had a stroke, and many of you know Frank, and we're not here to speak in behalf of he or his family, but Frank is one of those Carbon County individuals that has done more for a lot of organizations, individuals, and provided quality recreation opportunities for many, both in our county and out of that. If you pray, pray for him and a speedy recovery. If you have financial resources, there are a number of ways that have been set up in the community that you can help him and his family, and so we would, again, just ask you to keep him in your thoughts and in your prayers. He's encouraged by letters, cards, in that positive nature. There aren't a lot of accessibility to him as far as a hospital, so I'm not inviting the community to rush up to visit him, but know that he's a strong man, and there's a strong spirit there, and I know that his desires will be to, you know, be back as soon as he can. Anything else, Commissioners, you'd like to add for Frank?
You know, Frank is just one of those go-getters, always on the move, always going, and so this is gonna, all this downtime's gonna drive him crazy more than anything else. He's one of those individuals also, just, he himself has saved our county a lot of money, and the fact that he now does the job of what previously four or five other county employees used to do. He is an amazing individual, and anybody who's had activities, events, youth sports, or anything of the like, has had some contact or impact by Frank. And so he's definitely somebody here in our community that, in small or large part, has had a positive influence on us.
Thank you. Commissioners, before we do open our public hearing, there are some items that I would like to read and share for the record in regards to how our meetings will be conducted tonight. On our agenda are three public hearings, which we will open all at the same time. We will conduct them in this order. The first one will be in regards to the proposed tax increase in assessing and collecting in the municipal services fund. That will be, as you know, that hearing was opened, and tonight it will be shut. We did vote earlier in our previous meeting that we were not going to implement that, so we will confirm that during that public hearing, but that is the first item that we will take care of and formally close that off. We do appreciate all of the comments, and with respect to those, they have been copied and will become part of our permanent records. So we'll handle that one first. Second will be the 2017 budget adjustments, and the third will be the proposed 2018 adjustments. And again, because there's a large number of people here tonight in this public hearing, we want to establish just a few ground rules and to ensure that, you know, all your viewpoints are presented. First, we want to ask that those who wish to provide comments, that you come to the podium and that you state your names, and then the Commission will take those comments as we call you forward. We want you to state your name clearly and audible into the microphone so that all can hear that. We will require that each of you who choose to speak limits your comments to two minutes. If you're part of a group or an organization, we'd ask that if possible that you send a spokesperson who can represent you, and at that point in time do give us all of your names. We will also take additional testimony if time presents itself from members of that group. If you wish to present similar comments to, that are similar to the persons who've already spoken, please keep your comments brief and/or simply indicate that you agree with or support that testimony that has been given. If your comments are not specifically tailored to the purpose of our meeting, which is a public hearing in regards to those three items, or if repetitive testimony is included that we've already heard, we may ask you to redirect your comments or that you yield the floor to the next speaker. This is not a forum where you will ask questions of other groups or people, including the Commission, but it is an opportunity for you to present, and I emphasize, evidence that you believe to be relevant to those issues at hand. We will not answer questions in the public hearings. Now, I'd also like to take a personal privilege and have a little civics lesson, and that is going to be in regards to civility. I don't know if you, some of you missed that in school, but when George Washington was 14 years old, he wrote a book entitled Rules of Civility and Decent Behavior. There's 110 items that the man lived by and that he brought forth in his discussions, both in his friends and his groups, people he disagreed with, and in running a wonderful country. If you haven't taken a look at that, they may seem a little dated, but the principle is the same. The civility is part of the society that we call great. The other thing is this, that tonight, I'm not particularly interested in how you feel. What you want, what I want from you is to tell me what you think. And if you can't think yet, that's okay, then you can elaborate on some profound thought from somebody like Aristotle or Socrates. Borrow those opinions that you think are important until you have what I would say, the things that we're really here to discuss. And that's a wonderful place that we live, and the Carbon County as a whole. If you want, and what I really want, is for you to give evidence, facts, and your thoughts, that would be good to be considered for the entire Carbon County area. So I have become very disillusioned and very disappointed with what I see as bullying in regards to social media. I would suggest that as you go about presenting your facts in any medium, that perhaps you hire a fact checker, and just because I'm an elected official doesn't mean that I lie. The things that we will share with you tonight are things that you can grandma request if you feel the need to. You can look deeply into those numbers, but the bullying should stop on this level and continue down in through our children. So that's number one. The second is, is that perhaps we should all consider the golden rule. It doesn't matter what belief system you follow, you should do unto others as you'd like to have done unto you. So consider that as the second thing. I've had the opportunity to hear the loud angry voices in the public square and in the public hearings, and those are fine. You have your opinions, but if they are based totally on the feelings that you have generated through misinformation, I'm sorry, but they should not be a part of what we do. I've also heard the soft voices who come out and say thank you. Not thank you for raising my taxes, but thank you for listening, and thank you for being considerate in what you do in trying to represent the people of Carbon County. So we've heard all voices. I have heard all those voices. Now, you're gonna have an opportunity to speak tonight, and I would like for you to look at those things tactfully and look at the way that things are presented, and we will consider those as we open the public hearing. Also, before we do so, there were many questions that came about because of the public hearing last time in regards to the taxation, and also questions that have come in after that. So while we will not even attempt to answer all the questions and all the misinformation, we do want to go through some information that will be helpful for you as citizens of Carbon County. So with that, Commissioners, I'd like to go into this short presentation in regards to answering some of the key questions, or even perhaps those that are most often asked of the county. The first one, and I invite Commissioner Hopes and also Commissioner Mellor to be part of, obviously, these discussions. This first one, the first question is, is that often came of what do elected officials in Carbon County, specifically the Commissioners, get paid? So here's a listing of the offices that are elected positions and what those annual salaries are. Just by way of clarification, the justice court judge is actually appointed. He ends up on our ballots, and his wages are, again, set and dictated by the state of Utah. So in that regard, he is not a true elected official. Also, if you're interested in the code and the responsibilities of each of these offices, they are in Title 17 of the Utah Code, and each of those duties are independent of each office. This information is also available in print, and it will be available online. Any comments there, Commissioners?
Yeah, there are nine elective offices, as was stated. They each have by statute their own responsibilities. We all have, we all act independent of each other, but we rely on each other to do our jobs. I just wanna point out a couple things. As we've gone through this public hearing, there has been some questions. Tax abatements are handled at the clerk's office, so if you're elderly, or a veteran, or disadvantaged economically, please go to the clerk auditor's office, talk with them. There may be some options to have some tax abatements. I've found that to be true in several different instances. If you have questions about your property value, that is handled at the assessor's office. She is an elected official. We do not dictate how she, or Seth, or any of the other elected officials handle their jobs. If you find discrepancies with your value compared to somebody else's value, or don't think that the values are correct, you have an opportunity to go meet with her. And if you disagree at that point, then you can go to the Board of Adjustments. At the Board of Adjustments, you need to sign up in Seth's office for the, for a Board of Equalization hearing. That is done every year, and Seth's office takes role. He'll get you on that list. The assessing, the Board of Equalization is a, Carbon County is a Commissioner's responsibility. We do not handle that personally. We hire a, what would you call him?
Certified appraiser.
Certified appraiser to handle that for us. I don't know, I don't have enough knowledge nor am I licensed to be able to handle that appraisal adjustment. So we hire an adjuster to come in, and he will then sit down with you and look at your values and the values of other properties in the county, and if he sees discrepancies, he will change the values from what Julie has, or the assessors have put on it, to what he thinks is more fair. So those are just some of the, some of the questions that have been outlined as far as, or asked to me about some of the responsibilities. We do not control, contrary to popular belief, other elected officials. Every elected official stands on their own, and they have their own responsibilities, and the Commission, the only power that the Commission has is to set their budgets. And once their budgets are theirs, they operate how they choose and in what manner they choose.
This next slide is for, again, information. Again, we've been compared by a number of people to what other counties pay their Commissioners. This is a particular sampling from the eastern side of Utah, primarily those of us that are mineral extractors, and you can see there that the designations are full-time with the exception of San Juan, who is a part-time Commission and receives the full benefits that are put forward for those involved in county government. Some of these numbers have been rounded up, just for the ease of putting this on. The numbering in the blue shaded area is the class of county based on size. So the number three is a larger county, number four is where we fall into, and the number five class of county is where Emery County falls, and those are based on Next one that we want to help dispel is what are the packages, benefit packages, that are offered to county employees, including the elected officials. So these are the items that are given to all full-time employees, and these items that are specifically here are those items that have had change to them and that will be effective January 18 as we go into the new year. First, let me talk a little bit about the Utah retirement system. It started long before the 1963 date that is there, but it was put together, and first of all, in regards to help teachers who needed the ability to retire. And so over the years, from the early 1900s until 1963, there were various acts that were passed by the state to help protect and to help encourage people, particularly starting with the teaching profession, and then on through, to have the sufficient funds to retire when they got to that point. So all state entities, or any government entity in the state, or your local municipalities, including the county, cities, and school district, are required to participate in the Utah retirement system. And those numbers are set, as far as contribution to that, by the state every year. In our Commission meetings, once a year, we approve the formula, the rate that is given to us, so that in the next year, we can abide by the law, which is, they can audit, they can take a look at where those come from. I think it's important to note that Carbon County does not continue to contribute to the Utah retirement system after an employee or an elected official leaves office. So there is a termination of that, of that amount that is put in. The other thing is, is with life and health, these are the big benefit, the big dollar benefit packages, that all employees beginning this next year are on a high deductible policy. So they will qualify to establish themselves a health savings account, or an HSA. That's important to know, because in several studies and in the things that are going forward with healthcare, it has been taught that one of the most important things that a person can do is establish their health savings account, which means you have to be part of a high deductible plan. Those health saving plans do not expire. They roll forward. They can be used into retirement. They can be used for major medical. So they are what I call the up-and-coming way to have our healthcare in a much better position. Because of that change, and going forward, that resulted in a 13% decrease to the 2018 renewal. Decreases in healthcare are very rare. If we had not made that change, we were scheduled to be at a zero renewal amount. So healthcare is being well managed by the employees and the people here in the county. Also, starting in 2018, all employees will contribute 5% towards the cost of their policy. We're still seeing counties that are out there that are, particularly in government, that are paying 100%, but that will be a move in the direction that they will manage their own care based on that they are going to pay for a portion of that every year.
And Commissioners, that also applies to you as well. You're paying that same 5% just like all the other employees are. I think that's important for the public to understand that.
There are not two pots of money. There are not two sources of benefits in regards to elected officials versus county employees. Next item that may help you is that all benefits paid by Carbon County and upon termination. As with all retirement programs and plans, anything that has accrued to the benefit of that employee will retain in, remain in that system, and they'll be eligible for some type of retirement, whatever that amount happens to be, when they reach that age. But the county does not continue to pay into that when an employee or an elected official leaves. Again, there's been much conversation of that we have benefits for life. Now, I'm not sure really what that was meant to be, but I really do believe that any reference to that is a fairy tale. I've explained now those basic benefits that the county gets and that terminate when you are no longer here. So hopefully that will help dismiss or undo that rumor as far as benefits for life.
And again, that applies to any employee, elected or not.
Full-time, full-time employee that receives those benefits. Next one is raises for public officials and employees. Here's some statistical numbers for you. Again, this was one of those top items that in the public hearing and came across, is that in 2011, the Carbon County Commissioners' classification was changed from part-time to full-time. We've got that backwards. At that point in time in 2011, they received as part-time employees, part-time Commissioners, $48,792 and received full benefits. The last pay increase countywide, because it's been said that we've given ourselves a big raise and that we have given other increases across the board, but the last increase was a 3% cost of living, or a COLA, as it's known, given to all the employees in the year 2017, including elected officials. Prior to 2017, there was a 3% cost of living that was given in 2012. And prior to that, we'll go into that a little bit more, but there is no cost of living increase billed into the 2018 budget. So again, that's, that is where those numbers lay and fall as far as wages go. So you can see that since 2011, the Commission has increased from the $48,000 to the $51,700, what, and a little bit there. So what changes are we making for 2018? That has to do with the tentative 2018 budget. These are the departments that have been consolidated, and Commissioner Hopes, why don't you go through those, if you would please?
The road shop has been joined with the weed mosquito abatement. There is some opportunity to have employees going both ways. Some of the road employees will be certified to do weed and mosquito abatement, and they will be able to, on certain days, go help spray weeds, and then on days when we're heavy on the roadside, they will be able to go help drive trucks, run different machines and help on the roadside, do flagging, driving the flag truck, and different things like that. Some of the, some of the employees that were with the maintenance and weed mosquito department went under IT and communications. The reason why we put them there, the maintenance department, is we have a help ticket desk program at the county where people, if there is a leaky faucet or something that broke, they can submit a help ticket. It streamlines and allows for a ranking of priorities to the maintenance at the county. So some of the maintenance department went under IT. Also, the custodial duties, for the same reason, went under IT for that help ticket desk operation. Recreation will also oversee the maintenance department at the fairgrounds. So the, there was two departments out at the fairgrounds. You had the rec department and the maintenance that did all the plowing and the, took care of the arenas and set up for different events. It will all function under one umbrella now with one department head. GIS did not completely go away. It was split. Some of the GIS department will go under IT, and the other part of that, as was mentioned in our earlier meeting, the largest users of GIS are the road shop and the weed and mosquito abatement. So we put one of the GIS specialists out at the road shop to handle the largest portion of the weed mosquito and road maintenance, and the other one will stay with IT and handle, will still continue to operate for the public when they come in and ask for maps and different things. That person will still be there. Economic development and tourism will also be a combined position. Both of those department heads were laid off and given the opportunity to reapply for the joint position. The other change that was made that's not noted on here is that the senior center, all meals will be prepared in price for the East Carbon Center, and they will, and we are currently operating under that, and they will be delivered to East Carbon, as well as Meals on Wheels. This eliminates cooking in two different facilities with, and maintaining two different sets of equipment at two different facilities. All the cooking will be in one facility and then taken to the East Carbon facility, which reduces the number of staff needed to operate both facilities.
Commissioner Mellor, do you wanna talk on anything with insurance than, other than what we've already talked about?
There really isn't a whole lot more to touch on, other than, just to reiterate again, going from offering a traditional plan to an HSA-only plan, in and of itself, offered a dramatic cost savings, whereas most people this year, through open enrollment, are experiencing rate increases. They're experiencing rate increases because people use their insurance. When you go to an HSA-only plan, you then have to be more conscious of when you go to a doctor and what you use your medical expenses for, because the first, 100% of all the first dollars that you spend come out of your HSA account or your own, for lack of better words, your own bank account. come out of your HSA account or your own, for lack of better words, your own bank account, which helps people be more responsible in how they spend their medical dollars. That has helped us. We have seen this past year, when we did have a traditional plan and an HSA, we have seen that as more and more of our county employees have moved towards the HSA, that that has created a, a different mentality and a different lifestyle in how they spend in regards to their medical expenditures. And we've seen that because it has helped us keep our medical expense rate, our insurance rate from increasing. And now this year, making the change to completely go to HSA only as an option for our employees, has helped solidify that. The reduction of a five percent, meaning that a share for all the employees to participate and to pay part, is, is a move in, in the direction to help, 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 help the county solve part of its discrepancy between revenues and expenses by every employee pitching in a little bit. That percentage may increase in future years. It'll be something that will definitely be reviewed. As, as we know, in the private industry, it's, it's very common for employees to pay part of that. In the public sector, it's also very common for it to be a hundred percent covered by the government. So we're, we're finding a midpoint there, and we'll be reviewing that every year going forward.
Commissioners, can I mention one other thing?
Please.
There's been, I think there's a perception out there that the county employees also get free dental and vision insurance. That's not the case. Dental and, and vision plans are available, but the county employees have always had to pay for those. I think vision has been covered for the employee, but if they wanted to add their family, they had to pay for that. And dental plans of, are available, but the, the employees have to pay for those as well. So I want that to be clear, that that's not something that's just given to the employees as part of their medical insurance.
Correct. As, as part of the cafeteria plan, or what's, what's available on the smorgasbord of options for the employees, there's what the county covers, and there's a lot of additional things they can pay for if they find the need.
We talked about, you know, reduction of, of services. Less people mean less hours available. We don't want you to think that there's not going to be services available in any of the areas that have been previously made available to us as citizens. But there will be perhaps longer delays. You'll need to be patient when information is being sought and returned to you. And part of that is, is that there were thirteen positions that were eliminated in the process of this two thousand and eighteen budget. So just because those positions went away, didn't mean that the work that they were doing wasn't important or timely. Also, we reviewed all the department budgets, including our own, and there have been reductions, as you'll see if you have reviewed the two thousand and eighteen budget. Also, many of the comments that came in were, don't raise our taxes if you have a reserve in both your Class B road fund, and also your municipal services fund, which there is a little bit of reserve there. And so to further balance the budget for two thousand and eighteen, we will use five hundred thousand dollars out of the Class B road fund reserve, and three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars out of the municipal services reserve fund in the two thousand and eighteen budget. Turn the time to Commissioner Hopes to talk about roads.
Another one of the common complaints, or, or, or conversation pieces that we had during the public hearings, especially, I don't, I don't know about the other Commissioners, but the ones that I've had a lot of, were, why don't you fix this road? For example, one I heard a lot was First South, Eighth North. Well, in understanding this, we need to understand whose roads they are. Each city collects a municipal services tax, as well as the county. Those taxes are meant for the upkeep of those roads. This first slide shows all roads in the county and who they belong to. Inside our county, we have state roads, county B roads, city roads, county D roads, private and other, other. They might be a private driver or a road that nobody claims. If you go to the next slide. This, this slide basically shows, takes out a lot of the extra roads, the gas well roads that nobody is claiming, but they're a gas well road that we may utilize. But once the gas well company leaves, those roads may go away. You'll see that the, the state has roads in there as well. The cities have their small defined areas. The next slide.
Sorry.
This, this is just county roads that the county is responsible for. There's a, there's a difference between a B road and a D road. A D road is a road that is technically classified as a road that's passable by a four-wheel drive in good weather conditions. Those are your high mountain roads, or the roads that typically we call ATV trails, or, or something of that nature. They're not maintained to the highest standard. The rest of those roads are either gravel roads or paved roads that are at least graded by a motor grader once a year, or there are paved roads that are on our system of chip sealing and maintaining every year. If you have questions about any of the cities, we have these slides available of who owns which roads inside those cities. Obviously, through Schofield, there's a state road. We don't have any county roads, except for that D road that comes out of the Winter Quarters Canyon. As we move through Helper, there are a few roads that the county cherry stems into Helper. Oddly enough, a county can own roads or claim roads inside cities, but cities cannot claim road, roads outside of their city limits. So there are some roads that we have in Helper that we maintain as a county. Price City, there, again, there are some roads inside of Price City limits that we maintain. But for the majority of Price City, they are city roads. And if you have questions about those, please give the cities a call. Same with Wellington. Wellington, there's a few more. If you'll look at the bottoms of your screen, that, that darkest blue line that runs across the screen is Ridge Road. That's, that's maintained by the county and claimed by the county, even though, even though it goes through city limits. And then the first, I think that's First North, I can't.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Commissioner.
Uh, first, I think it's First North in, in, or no, First West, in, in the city limits there, that goes out towards Ridge Road as well. And then the last one is East Carbon. Again, East Carbon has some county roads that go through it, but most of the roads are owned and maintained by those cities. They have their own maintenance budget for their own roads. There's been some comments made, specifically by Mr. Coonrod in several of his letters, letters to the editor, and in comments to the county, that we have more employees and less roads than we did. We went back twenty years. In, in two thousand, well, not quite twenty years, seventeen years, we had twenty employees and we maintained four hundred and thirty-nine point zero six center, centerline miles. So that, that's both lanes of traffic. It's just right down the middle, we're claiming both, both sides of the road, and, and claiming it as one lane. And in two thousand and seventeen, we have fourteen employees, and we maintain six hundred and fifty-three point nine one centerline miles of road. So we are, we are doing more with less. However, we do have, you know, to, to, when the county was formed, to be able to maintain this many lane miles of road, you'd have, I don't know, triple, quadruple this number of employees to maintain those. As the equipment got better, and as we got more efficient, the number of employees needed to maintain those roads has gone down. We are also looking, some of the comments that were made were about what roads we need to maintain. We are looking at Emma Park, and, and potentially putting on it a seasonal closure as the expenditure to maintain that road during the winter. Last year, we spent, there was one week where we spent an entire week trying to open that road and could not open it because of the amount of snow on the ground, and it was a big year. But we plowed and plowed and plowed, and, and used the, the snow blower up there for an entire week and did not get that road all the way open. And it took us a while to get that road open. So we're looking at having a possible seasonal closure on that road. There are some property owners on that road, so we're looking for people to give us comment. There are gas companies, we will allow them to plow into their, their gas wells, to maintain their gas wells, but we will, we're looking at not opening that. That road has a little bit of an issue, because it's partly owned by Utah County and Carbon County. So Utah County doesn't have a lot of desire to open that road, and most of Carbon County residents don't use that road. We're either going to Duchene or to Salt Lake County. And unless we're coming from one or the other, going to, from Utah County to Duchene, during the winter, most often, that road isn't used by Carbon County residents. So we're, we're entertaining some comments on those roads as well. If you have road issues about the roads that are specifically in the county, please contact us. This is the number that you can contact, the road department. And if, if they, after a reasonable amount of time, haven't addressed your pothole or, or a road issue that is in the county, then you can reach out to me, and I will reach out to the department head and work on getting that problem resolved.
This last slide is in regards to property taxes and a little bit of history in regards to what the county has done. Contrary to many comments and statements, the county does not raise taxes every year. We recognize that taxes go up because of our centrally assessed issues, which could be a whole nother lengthy discussion. But certain properties have also been reevaluated, as Commissioner Hopes indicated, through the assessing process. There's also those adjustments that are due to the centrally assessed. And we are a county among a few in the state of Utah that has a lot of centrally assessed property in that. But there is not, but that does not increase the tax levy or the percentage rate that, that goes on each year. In two thousand and seventeen, this year, there was a general county levy that was passed that raised four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a nine percent increase in this year's budget. Last time Carbon County raised in the municipal funds, in the municipal county, excuse me, in the general county level, was in two thousand and ten, at seventy-three thousand, two hundred, and also in the municipal services fund at that time, for three thousand and forty-seven dollars. In two thousand and five, the assessing and collecting levy was raised fifty-seven thousand dollars. Records from there indicate that there had not been any increases back to nineteen ninety-nine. And prior to nineteen ninety-nine, those records were not readily available or digitized at this point, so that we could easily have access to them.
Commissioners, if I could add one item to that, and that is that with respect to the reassessment process that takes place, I just hope the public understands that that, that is a statutorily required process that is imposed upon the county assessor. She is required by statute to reappraise using general mass appraisal standards and, and standards of practice. She is required to reappraise every different area within the county periodically.
Every five years.
Every five years. It's not something that she does upon her own discretion, or when she feels like it, and she doesn't do it. And, and she's required to follow mass appraisal standards, which are imposed upon her by the state. So to the extent that sometimes that results in more taxes being paid, I think it's important to understand that that's simply generally a, a function of her performing her statutorily required duties, and an increase in value that may not have, that, that is reflected due to market conditions. That is not the same thing as a tax levy increase. That is being bandied about in circles that I'm hearing, as if those are one in the same. They are not one in the same. The assessor has no choice when market values go up, but to reflect that in her assessed values that she puts on properties. Now, I do understand that that results in more taxes being paid on those properties, and that that is a hardship at times. And as Commissioner Hopes mentioned, there is a process by which you can appeal that through the Board of Equalization. But I think it should be noted that that's a different process than the raising of taxes. The net effect may be the same, and it may be a cumulative effect, but it should be noted that it's not done arbitrarily or randomly, and, and it's not, it's, it's not something that you've imposed secretively. I think that needs to be understood. So thank you for allowing me to interject there.
Thank you. If we go ahead and turn on the lights, that would be great. Turn off the projector and the screen. Commissioners, we now need to open our public hearings, and we'll need a motion to open the three that are mentioned. We better open them by, specifically by name, and so we'll take a motion at this time.
I'll make the motion that we open the public hearing of the amended two thousand and seventeen budget, that we also open the public hearing on the two thousand and eighteen proposed budget, and finally, that we open the public hearing regarding proposed property tax increase for Carbon County assessing and collecting municipal services funds.
And if we could have the speakers list brought forward, that would be great. The first one that we will talk about, again, is the tax increase that was proposed, that the public hearing was held. Thank you. And we've taken all those comments into consideration, both the written, emailed, and in the public hearings. And like I had mentioned earlier, in our, when our commission meeting started today at four thirty, we had that brief discussion, and a motion was made that no tax increase be implemented for the, in either of those funds, both the municipal service fund or the assessing and collecting. That was a unanimous vote. And so there will be no tax increase in the two thousand and eighteen budget. And we would like to just, again, confirm that that has taken place and been voted on by this commission. So we will close the, that particular hearing at this time in regards to the taxation. And we will move forward with, the next item was in regards to the two thousand and seventeen adjustments. And I don't know if there's any information Seth, that you'd like to give. I know we are in public hearing, there was no one that signed up to speak to that. Those adjustments are being made, so that we are again in compliance with the state and with the auditing process.
And just for the record, Commissioners, you discussed those proposed amendments to the two thousand and seventeen budget at your public meeting that was open to the public on December first.
That's correct.
Those were gone through in detail at that meeting.
State required that ten-day availability for you to be able to review those. So we had that hearing on that Friday, and then these items were posted at that point in time. So seeing that no one has signed up for that, we'll take a motion to, I don't know, did we take a motion to close that other?
I would think you might want to ask the audience, though, if there's anybody who still wants to come forward to, to talk on the amended two thousand and seventeen budget.
I'm, I'm backtracking, did we take a motion to close that public hearing on the taxes? We need to do that.
Okay. Do we need to, in a like manner, do we want to allow anybody to speak to that as well? Or because we're not passing it, is it?
Yeah, because we're not passing it, and we've already held that hearing, we don't need to do that.
I don't see the need to have a public hearing on that, if there's no possibility. Since you foreclosed the possibility of a tax increase, I don't think there's any need to have the public hearing tonight on the proposed tax increase. That's a moot issue now.
Motion to close the public hearing on the proposed tax increase for Carbon County assessing and collecting and municipal services fund.
Have a motion.
And a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now we're back to the two thousand and seventeen adjustments. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that? Seeing no one coming?
We got one.
My name's Doug Olson, I just wanted to say one thing.
My name's Doug Olson, I just wanted to say one thing. You know, CEOs of companies, when a union or company negotiates, sometimes when they can't come to terms, they lay people off before Christmas. I just want to say, I hope, you know, if you have to eliminate jobs, that it's not until the first of the year, that these people can stay on to support their families through the Christmas holidays. And that's, I just, that's all I wanted to say. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Anyone else on 2017? Seeing no one else coming forward, commissioners, we'll take a motion to close the 2017 budget adjustments.
Motion to close the 2017 amended budget adjustments.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item then is the proposed 2018 budget hearing. We do have five individuals, well, it looks like four individuals that have signed up to speak. We'd like to first hear from Alan Peterson, then Harvey Howard, it looks like we've already heard from Doug Olson, and then Tom Matthews, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, commissioners, especially thank you for the presentation. I think communication is always good. When in doubt, over-communicate. Thanks for answering questions that have been come forth, whether, you know, if people were on track or off track. Moving forward from both sides, part of our solution's going to be found in better communication. So thanks for straightening some things out and answering some questions that you couldn't answer in those meetings.
Thank you.
So, so my comments, I'm representing a committee, so I have written, "Dear Commissioners and Clerk Auditor, in response to the recent budget concerns and potential tax increase, Commissioner Melwer asks that a group of citizens be assembled representing different private property owners and business leaders of the county. The objective of this committee is to provide recommendations on how best to manage the decline of mineral lease funds and centrally assessed property taxes. Upon review of the financial information provided to the committee, including budget reports, discussions with each of the county commissioners and clerk auditor, and a review of fund balances and sources, our committee has observed the following concerns. Concern number one, the clerk auditor's office does not have a complete or accurate accounting of all county funds, and as such, recommendations for tax increases and decisions on personnel and services, we feel are being made without accurate information. Recommendation number, or finding number two, there's poor communication between departments, which further complicates or worsens the financial situation of the county. Finding number three, the county has not followed best practices in managing their audit process, reconciling cash, collecting payments, and planning for future financial needs. Based on our findings, we as a committee request that the commission, and we request these things of the commission and the clerk auditor. Number one, immediately implement all recommendations laid out by the state auditor's office in their December 1, 2017 letter to you, the commissioners. Number two, create a detailed and accurate accounting of all county budgets and funds, have this reviewed by an unbiased third-party entity who is fully qualified to advise as to best practices, and ensure that previous mistakes have been corrected, and have an open review of this process by the committee on or before April 1st of 2018. In closing, we trust that as you have asked us to organize ourselves and volunteer our time to help support the needs of Carbon County, that you would be willing to work with this request, as well as future requests and recommendations from our committee. If I could, I would like to touch on the bullet points in the state auditor's letter. I know you mentioned it earlier and that it was going to be available.
Please.
The recommendations, and I'll just read the title of each recommendation. Number one, establish a regular review of financial reports. Number two, consider adding fund or cash reserve balances to the budget document. Number three, develop a method to identify and measure municipal services in the unincorporated areas. Number four, reconcile all cash accounts monthly within 30 days. Number five, create a general ledger account for each bank account. And number six, consider restating the 2016 financial statements. One other portion of this letter that I'd like to read into the public records. "We performed the procedures described below at Carbon County on November 20th." Again, this is from the state auditor's office. "The purpose of these procedures was to assist the county in addressing concerns of potential fraud, waste, and abuse of public funds. Bullet point one, we reviewed cash balances in the municipal service fund for December of 2016. Bullet point two, we reviewed budgetary and accounting practices generally. Bullet point three, we interviewed certain elected officials and employees. Our procedures were more limited than would be necessary to express an audit opinion on compliance or on the effectiveness of internal control or any part thereof. Accordingly, we do not express such opinions. Alternatively, we have identified the procedures we performed and the recommendations resulting from those procedures. Had we performed additional procedures, or had we made an audit of the effectiveness of internal control, other matters might have come to our attention that would have been reported to you." With that, I just encourage continued involvement with, at the state level, accept their guidance, accept their help, accept the committee's guidance and help, accept the public's comments, even, even some that maybe are out of line, but when in doubt, over-communicate. And I have, I have four copies of this letter with the signatures of the 14 committee members, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan.
This committee consisted of the following individuals, we said that we would read those in and take their names, Paul Anderson, Neil Brian Holt, Connie Dyerin, Gina Gagin, Bush Jensen, Gus Colatssis, Angelo Koteipas, Ryan Murray, Alan Peterson, Ellis Pierce, Dave Smith, Kathy Hannah Smith, Terry Willis, and Anne Zachariah. Thank you. Harvey.
Thanks for the time, I appreciate it. I would just, you know, I'm talking on behalf of myself and the business that I'm involved with, and just would like to express, a couple of years ago, I went through what I called a tax increase, it was actually a valuation increase, $700 to over $4,000. That's a big bust on a small business, and it has affected us. It's hard to make that up when you're, you're not out there making a lot of money. We're here, we're putting on races, we're doing a lot the same as what they're doing at the fairgrounds and at the shooting range and things like that. And quite honestly, we would not have been here. We folded up a couple of years ago, and we would not have been here if it wasn't for the tourism department here. What they've done for us, Shallee and the girls at the tourism, the ideas that they've come up with, the help that they've put forth to keep us going, that this stuff is happening in other counties around the state, and other counties are competing with us as much as they possibly can. They're spending tens of thousands of dollars to get these tourists and people there to spend their money. So basically, what I'm asking is to, as you're looking at cuts, and I know you guys are going through some tough times right now, looking at cutting jobs and cutting positions and cutting departments, make sure that you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, because there's some good things going on in Carbon County right now. There's some good things being done with TRT money and restaurant tax money that's specifically for those types of things, to bring people here to stay in restaurant, or in motels and eat in restaurants. You know, O'Reilly's and a couple of the other businesses around town that have record days when we have races, or the motorcycle shops that have record days when there's motorcycle races, the things that go on, there's a lot of money that comes here and is spent here. So, you know, think about it, if you're investing $1,000 and you're getting $100,000 back, or you're getting $5,000 in sales tax back, you know, just make sure when, you know, that's what I'm asking, make sure, look at, when you're looking at these departments, there's some of them that are a great benefit. And I see on your overhead there that you're going to eliminate one or combine a couple of them. So, you know, I'm just, I'm here telling you that, them departments make a big difference. And I've appreciated them, they've done the county some good the last few years, and we'd like to think that they can do us some more good in the future, so. Appreciate your time, and consider that.
Thank you, Harvey. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Harvey.
Next is Tom Matthews.
One thing I wanted to comment on, meetings are not meetings, we're talking.
Will you pull the mic up? Mike, I know that you've got a loud voice, but we've got to get it recorded.
Meeting with Commissioner, I didn't meet with Commissioner Potter, but we talked on the phone afterwards, and he did ask me about the benefits, and everybody beat up on him that night, he is telling the truth, I will. Once you're gone, you pay into the system, and once you're out, you may get a retirement and you get a age, but whatever you put into it, and that's all you get paid. You don't get any anymore, there's no lifetime benefits. If there is, I wish you could tell me how to get them, I'll sign up for them right now if you could have.
Maybe we can make it retroactive?
Yeah, yeah. That would be bad. I just have a couple things to say. One thing about it, you guys would make good poker players. You sit there and took a lot, and this last meeting was pretty tough, I don't know if I could sit there and do what you took through. But I think you've went about it the wrong way to cut all the employees. I think you could have took the departments and had them cut their budgets more. We did that when I was here, we were out of funds. We took the department heads in after we'd cut what we could cut and told them to cut 10 to 15 percent of their budgets, they couldn't, and we did. Every one of those department heads went and cut their budgets. They cut the money out of them, and we did that, and we didn't lay off employee, lay off employee people. I don't know if you know how it feels to get laid off. As a kid, the coal mines got laid off all the time, and my dad was part of them, and how do you come home to your family and say, "I just lost my job"? It's very tough. I was on the railroad one morning, they called us to work after we'd had all sorts of tractor up and told everybody to go in the office, and they made some big major cuts, and they told everybody to go home. They paid them for five days, because on a railroad, you get five days of pay. They can't just up and lay you off one day and call you, be in a truck and call you into the office and say, "You're fired," or "You're gone." Very inappropriate, I think, very, not caring about the employees and what they've done for you. I mean, it's, I don't think that was very professional. I think we could have done that in a better way. People like Ben Clemmons, Ben Clemmons was there when I was there. He took the GIS department, which we didn't have hardly anything. You had one, and Ben started this and did a good job, and we let him go. Another thing is, what can we do to cut the budget? Now, still, looking at it, one thing I looked at, travel. You can cut all your out-of-state travel, your in-state travel, and that's commission and employees. Your cell phones. Do we need all the cell phones we have out there? Or do we have, do we have a program where we go to the state, or to the cell phones and put it out for bid? Each company, there's two or three companies in town that we could put it up for bid, and give it, Prywite does that, they have a plan that they do, all the people have one billing. Maybe it'll save you some money. The other thing is, I don't think we should contract any outside lawyers anymore, and we've done that in the past. We have good lawyers, we have Christian, we have Jeremy, we have plenty of lawyers in this county not to go outside the area to get advice from, and I know that's happening, that we've been doing that. We looked at the soccer fields. It came to the soccer fields, it came to the special service district, everybody on the special service district said wait on the restrooms and, but we backdoored it and went to the CIB to get, we had to have it. We didn't even know if the soccer fields are going to go, or how they're going to, but we still went to get the money because we needed the money, and I think that was a waste. How can we do to help pay for some of this stuff? Maybe it's work off hours, maybe every team, it's not just soccer, maybe it's baseball, maybe it's everything. Maybe we get them to come and do it. Maybe into big cuts, maybe the commissioners go do something out there. When I was there, I worked at the fairgrounds, I was in a loader, water trucks, and everything. When the wintertime comes, Casey, you're in the field of, or heavy equipment and stuff like that with Noco, maybe they could call you to come and help pave the roads. Maybe Commissioner Miller, they could call you to help mow the lawns. You were really interested and wanted to get the soccer fields to help cut costs. The other thing we looked at here, we're taking on new work in the county, we're taking on a subdivision that's going to cost taxpayers money. You says their bond is paying for it, we've had Christian do work on it, Curtis Page has done work up there, and so these things are all costing them money. We, here we go to Jones and the Mill. Why don't we put this up for bid? Why do we just have Jones and the Mill automatically do things? When you come to a meeting, Jones and the Mill sits at the table like they're a county employee. Maybe they would lower their prices if they knew they have competition. Right now, they know they have it, and they just do it. When Evan Hansen was there, we didn't contract all this stuff out. They did it. Last thing I want to close on, and part of it you brought up, in 2000, I have a thing from my retirement statement saying what the wages was as a county commissioner. I don't know if you're aware of what it was in 2000? It was $30,000. I made $36,600 because they got paid $500 a month for, if you didn't take, if you didn't take insurance. So that's a big chunk of pay, to be in that many years from 2000 to now to make 51,000, 52,000. The other things we did, when you got the cost of living raise, I saw how much your cost of living raised, we put them in our mind. You're at $50,000 versus somebody that makes $20,000, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of difference. When I was on the board at Prywite, I helped convince them to take all of the pool of money that was in the cost of living raise and deliver it, divide it between everybody. Those people on the bottom end a lot more need that raise than the people on the top end. So the last thing I guess I want to close with is I think maybe elected officials ought to take a 10% cut in pay. All the workers had to take a cut, they lost their jobs, they got consolidated, they got different, so I maybe think elected officials ought to take a 10% cut. You could still survive, a lot better than the people that lost their job, they got $3,000 or $4,000 severance paid. And I'm not asking you to quit it on, I just ask you that way, if you're concerned about the budget and want to make man's meat, maybe you guys could help too. Thank you.
That is everyone that signed up. Is there anyone else that'd like to take a couple minutes? Please state your name.
Cheryl Lupo. First and foremost...
Cheryl. Pull it close to you.
It doesn't pick up unless you speak close to it, sorry.
Like right there? That's good?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, first and foremost, I recommend that the Carbon County Commissioners adopt all the recommendations of the Office of the State Auditor, just like Alan brought up. And I'm not going to go through all of what he went through, but again, to repeat so everybody understands, establish a regular review of financial reports, consider adding fund or cash reserve balances to the budget document, which I'm kind of surprised wasn't done in the first place. I mean, that is something that is just an easy go-to look at kind of thing. Number three, develop a method to identify and measure municipal services in the unincorporated areas, which is also a Utah Code, 1734-5. Reconcile all cash accounts monthly within 30 days. Create a general ledger account for each bank account. Now, this in itself, right there, is really a no-brainer. Why this has never been done, and it took the auditors to come show you that that... Why this has never been done, and it took the auditors to come show you that that should be looked at, that is like your scorecard in baseball, it tells you where you're at. And number six, consider restating two thousand and sixteen financial statement. I also have some recommendations of my own. For one, any new county commissioner coming into office should have a third-party audit done immediately. The places that I've worked at before, when they had a new branch manager come in, they did a soft audit, got the books so that you had an end and you had a beginning, and everybody understood, all the line items were there, everybody knew what they were looking at going forward. I also believe, and I don't know if any of you guys have read the master plan of Carbon County, it was back in nineteen ninety-four established, but if, if that master plan, that is, that is just a, a place, a starting place to show what the county is looking at, what they want to do, what they were looking at for the future, it would get everybody on the same page, everybody could work towards the same goals, which is also, would be great for the citizens of Carbon County, because everybody would know what you're doing. And if that became something for the administration that is coming in, all elected officials, all commissioners coming in, they could say, "You know what, there is a plan out there, there is something that we could do, that we should be following," and that's the, the master plan, and it's used to get grant money, it's used to do everything for the county. I don't know if anybody here's read it, I've read it all. Anyways, there also needs to be an advisory committee. This is a structured, that is structured in a way for individual citizens of the county to share their opinions and perspectives, study issues, and develop recommendations of a focused, small-group structure. The primary purpose of an advisory committee is to provide judicious advice from a citizen's purpose, perspective to the commission. Any commissioner or any person that is already working for Carbon County should not decide the advisory committee. The advisory committee should be made up of a group that is just a group of private citizens that will look to be the actual voice of the citizens of Carbon County on volunteer basis. I also believe, from what I've heard, that there needs to be more communication amongst commissioners and departments. I've heard that there's a lot of disconnect and there's no communication between the two, and I think that's been, been a real issue for many, many years. I agree with a lot of what Tom Matthews has said. I believe that there are things that, I think as a commissioner, you should put your own skin in the game, and you should, you should do, and you should be the ones that everybody follows, that you should be the example, that you should set the precedence for the, the citizens of Carbon County. Christine Watkins did a beautiful job of it by sitting down and communicating to the newspapers about what she's done, what she's voted on, what she's talked about, she's full exposure. I think that would have helped in this situation. If everybody would have had full exposure through the paper or some kind of other media forum, then everybody wouldn't have been questioning wages and questioning budgets and questioning your benefits and everything else. There's been a lot, a lot of people learn through this whole process. I have one last thought. We, the citizens of Carbon County, believe in each one of you, and that is why you were elected into office in the first place, because we believed in you. We believe that under your watch, you would protect us from what we are experiencing right now. We gave you our hard-earned money by paying our property taxes and believing that would be money well-spent and that it would never land in this kind of situation. We have lost our trust in you. Maybe in days to come, you can prove us wrong by taking good care of our money. Once again, thank you.
Did you have one more that wanted to speak?
My name is Pete Kilborn, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things.
Step right up to the mic, Pete.
Wanted to talk about a couple of things that I see as sort of shooting ourselves in the foot here, specifically the GIS shop and tourism. I worked about half my career as a manager of a GIS shop as an information manager. There are many functions such as data collection, data management, and mapping that must be coordinated. Especially important is data management to, to reduce redundancy of data and effort and ensure data quality. From my experience, splitting these functions is likely to lead to inefficiency, redundancy, and wasted effort. You can use a well-oiled GIS shop to help the county move forward and be more competitive. What you're doing, I think, is a step back. Likewise, tourism has been very effective in moving the county forward, and removing the tourism department is also a step back. I think you're kind of shooting yourselves in the foot when we, looking to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw one more hand, we'll take yours and that'll be our final one for tonight.
My name is Tom Peluso, and I only have, excuse me, one comment that goes along with what Tom Matthews said. I mentioned that Jake Muller in the past that, if you guys considered taking a cross-the-board cut in salaries, all the employees, I think they'd be better off to, I know me personally would rather have a cut in pay rather than get laid off, so I just mentioned that as a idea, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners will go ahead and take a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the two thousand and eighteen public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us tonight.